All right, welcome. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd like to call to order this Thursday, April 4th, 2024, meeting of the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission. Seven o'clock. Present tonight, we have Secretary John Dusa, Vice Chair Bob Reinhart, Mike Bogdan, Andy Rubin, myself, Carol Snow, Chair Janet Peckinpah. John Morgan, towns and our town planner, Erin Mannix. Zooming in from Washington is Bob O'Connor. This being our first meeting of the month, we focus on the plan of conservation and development, but we have one business item on the agenda first to take care of. We hope it goes quickly. So I'd like to start then with 24-07, 63 Middle Beach Road West, map 15, lot 24, zone R4. The owner is Earl W. Tucker and family, third and family trust LLC applicant Ronald Wassmer. It's a coastal site plan application to permit construction of terraces and retaining walls within 25 feet of a coastal resource. It was tabled from the March 21st meeting in part because we just got a response from deep at like five o'clock that afternoon. I think we've all had a chance to look at that. And basically, just a quick summary that they said it was really up to us to decide whether these walls were significant in terms of erosion control. So with that said, we realize that what we really need is input from engineers. So I don't know, have you all brought your engineer? Oh, yay, great, welcome.
Evening, for the record, my name is Ronald Wassmer, I'm a professional engineer. I'm an answer there, and my office is in Milford, Connecticut. Let me pass out a few pictures. I have maybe a half a dozen of them, so if you might have to share.
You can share.
One more if you need it. I just want to keep one so I can know what I'm talking about. I typed up a brief response this afternoon. You know, I'm just going to leave it. It's a lot of, I won't say technical, but it's kind of dealing with technical topics.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that the commission would like to discuss the walls discussed, constructed on the property. So I'll just start out, my professional opinion, the wall's function is landscape walls generally is a demarcation between adjoining residential properties to the east and to the west. These walls are not constructed in shoreline flood and erosion control structures. The concrete seawall along the shoreline was constructed many years ago. It extends easterly and westerly along several of the adjoining properties. This seawall is not constructed by the property. So now, in support of my opinion, I have some maps that I want, any pictures that I want to talk about. First, I kind of just want to talk about FEMA and their mapping. And I'm going to jump ahead a sentence or two, but basically say that FEMA has to map the entire United States. So they have a pretty broad stroke of the brush. In support of what I'm going to say, one of the top pictures that you have is the FEMA flood map. The red dot in the middle is 63 Middle Beach Road. And then if you notice to the right side of the map, which is to the east, you'll see a line that's labeled 53. It's a dashed line, right, it comes, runs north on the south. So this is a transect. What FEMA does is they do transects every so often along the shoreline to do a detailed analysis to determine what floods are. And then just to elaborate on their broad brush of the stroke, there's the next transect westerly is number 52, which is about 7,000 feet away, and it doesn't show up in the map because I didn't plot a map that broad. And then the one to the east is over near Fence Creek. So that's again about 7,000 feet. So then I'm going to flip to the next picture. This is a Google Earth. So the transect number 53 kind of runs towards where it says Wine Brook Lane, you know, runs through the sound, north and south. And you'll notice it's much more of a beach area over there. So this picture's from 2018, and I copied it because it shows the features clearly. Some of the people, the Google Earth now is a, you know, it's high tide. So what I want to point out is there's a significant rock formation immediately to the south of the property, and it stands both east and west for seven parcels. You'll also see there's several jetties jutting out into the east, jutting out into the sound, and of course, the wharf at the end of Wharf Row. I mentioned the transects. So the subject property as well as the adjoining properties has much greater protection from flooding and erosion compared to where FEMA did their transect. This is as a result of the natural rock formation and the jetties that were built many years ago. So that's just kind of what description is, you know, FEMA says here's a flood zone. I don't question that properties have a flood zone. But it's possible that if you did a detailed analysis, you did a transect over that rock outcrop, and took into consideration the seawalls that are there, they might have a slightly different flood zone than what they came up with.
This is AE, right, not BE?
Correct.
It's close to BE, but it's close because, and that protects it, that's what it protects.
But Ron, could you explain the limo, the limited moderate wave action that brings this property into the regulatory?
It isn't, in what Erin said, a limited wave action. So that means that the structure has to be built in accordance with the VU requirements, which it was. And the house is built on piles, and then the piles are connected with the foundation to piers, and then the walls are breakaway walls. So and all the living spaces up on the next higher floor.
When you say the walls are breakaway, though, you mean the walls of the?
So in between the concrete piers, the piers remain.
Of the house, yeah.
Yes, of the house, yes. So I have a couple of pictures that I took earlier in the year when we got started on this. The first picture is the rear of the subject property looking to the southeast. That's, yes, this picture was a two flag closing. The wall constructed by the applicants in the foreground. You can also notice the wall beyond the second flagpole as well as the jetties further beyond and the rock outcrop. This easterly wall stands, the neighbor's easterly wall extends above the lawn. The storms that would cause the most damage or the most impact to this property, neighboring properties, would most likely come from the southeast hurricanes coming up the coast. And impacts of this storm would be reduced by the jetties and the walls east of our property. Thus, the walls are not functioning as erosion control structures. That's the newer walls built on our client's property. Also notice the height of the wall built by the applicant is generally the same height as the existing walls, and therefore not causing any harm to the adjoining properties. How far below the radius of the wall? It varies. You can see from the picture, it extends about 18 inches above. It varies. So right here, there's literally no change between the topography on both sides. The topography's a little bit lower, but that's out of the V zone. And it's generally because the topography of neighboring property undulates a little bit. I'm almost done. The last picture, this is looking to the southwest. Shows the two existing seawalls that were built prior to our client's property. And it shows the newer wall that was built. Now, it's difficult to see that wall. It's just beyond that concrete block, and you'll see that it's flush with the ground. It's flush with the ground for about the first 25 feet. My understanding is that when Erin mentioned to Earl that the other wall was built and it could be a problem that he stopped, he was working on this side, so he didn't drop that down. Both landscape walls extend from the rear towards the street. The wall is part of a finished terrace that's used in aiding access to the entrance of the house, as well as supporting finished terrace. So I just want to say one more time for the record. In summary, you'll see these pictures function primarily as landscape walls, and in some it's supporting the finished terrace, not serve as erosion control structures. That was where I was at four o'clock this afternoon. And then I received another email where Erin spoke to the city engineer or town engineer, and he referred to a section in your floodplain management.
Ordnance, yeah.
And specifically made some comments about placing fill on the property. So I read through the questions. I'm going to respond to the questions. It's a little bit more chopped up. But the first question is that fill's not used as structural support for the house. The structure is supported by piles, incorporated concrete puddings. Fill that was brought onto the site is minor in volume. Fill is used around the buildings, in walkways to aid access to the house, in the parking area. The fill decreases in thickness as the parking area approaches the street, basically zero thickness. Fill is also used for drainage purposes. Fill along the walkways is not compact and could wash up from a storm surge. Fill would not generate any excess loads on the building for a couple of different reasons, but one of them is the breakaway panels. So they're intended to break away with 15 pounds of force per square foot. So if a wave hit the house, it would cause the breakaway panel to fall versus causing structural damage to the house. The fill is not above the existing seawall to the rear, and therefore will not cause any ramping or wave deflection. My observations of the fill, it's that of sandy soil and does not have a tendency for excessive compaction. The volume of fill and the distribution of fill will not cause any wave deflection. And the fill is not constructed in a slope, and therefore will not cause any wave run-up or ramp. And I think that addresses all the questions that were posed in that section. So with that, I'll be quiet. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Just going to say in summary, they're 100% finished with the house, the moving trucks, I think, are sitting around somewhere. They're anxious to move in, so you guys can hold on this.
So could you explain a little bit more about the construction of the wall itself, how deep down into the ground?
They do have a footing, yes.
There's a footing, a concrete footing?
Yes, concrete.
And they're not made to break away? And do they have drains at all?
There's no weed holes.
No weed holes, okay.
The soil on the, there is a height to the terrace. It's less than 18 inches, so it's not, you know, it's not this tall along the neighbor's property.
Yeah, it's 18 inches, but then it, like, down by the driveway, it is a little bit because the land slopes of down.
Your regulations talk about finished terrace, and the finished terrace is 18. So in some places, the walls are taller than the 18 inches, but the difference between the grade on both sides. Now, towards the street, there's no threat of wave action. Really, the biggest threat for wave action is going to be impacted by the existing seawalls that were built many years ago.
And there's even one that goes perpendicular, as I saw, I think on one of the?
Yeah, it could be on Google Earth.
Yeah. I think it, I think it comes into your property, sort of in front of your flagpole, maybe. It's an old one. So, so in addition to the rocks, there's also a perpendicular seawall kind of going across there. Yeah, so I wanted to add too that thanks for your explanation about FEMA, but then two of us just happened coincidentally to attend a FEMA presentation, I think it was last, was it last week, about erosion and the new, the new models for erosion that they put into place. And I guess they've done, this group has done all of, all of New England, up past Portland, Maine, and now down to Connecticut, so they're just giving the presentations about the Connecticut shoreline and.
Yeah, FEMA's been doing one, so they adopted their regulations in the 70s, and they stayed status quo until like 2010.
So I did sort of alter our, my staff report and things based off of conversations with Johnny Naco and anticipating that Ron would be in attendance this evening as well. And so the question really was, and I think Ron gave a good presentation with his professional opinion, at least to guide you a little bit of his opinion on the determination of landscaping feature versus a shoreline flood and erosion control structure.
Right.
The Coastal Management Act does kind of speak to that very broadly. So really, that discretion comes down to the commission. And then on top of that would be the compliance with our floodplain ordinance, which I would assume, Ron, you're going to follow up with?
Sure, I can.
Your letter?
I can send that to you tomorrow.
With John as well.
Give it to your city engineer.
Right, and that would be, because it's relevant to the final compliance, because that, the site grading and the retaining walls were not included in the original floodplain, you know, the permit with John. So these site changes, having that information, and our ordinance changed from the time of issuing the permit for the house, a revised ordinance was adopted last summer, just about, just under a year ago. And so it was more to adopt the model regulations from, from the state. So one option, I know that there's an interest to kind of expedite permit process here, approval process, if the commission is willing. If you prefer, you could absolutely wait for the town engineer to provide you with a memo that says Mr. Wassmer has addressed his, you know, the requirements in this particular section of the floodplain ordinance, or a draft language as a condition, that if you're comfortable, you can, you can add that as a condition of your approval, that prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, the applicant can provide to the zoning enforcement officer verification from the floodplain administrator that all landscape activities as constructed and shown in the application documents comply with the Town of Madison floodplain ordinance. So that's an option as well for you.
Yep, great. I mean, I did go to the ordinance and see, and you've addressed all the points, I think, that's in the relevant paragraph about the type of the soil and what will happen with it. I appreciate you're getting that together within such a short time for us tonight.
I was, I was a little, I don't know, flabbergasted, is probably a better word, when I read it, but then after I read it two or three times, I was like, you know, I can answer these questions.
Good, yeah. It's not well written. I, John, I mean, John and I, and I think the language is taken straight from the model regs, which is, but it's, it's.
They don't read like a novel.
No, they don't read like a novel.
No, and it's not, I don't know, it's.
But you can see what the concerns are, and you address those concerns, I think. I don't know, how does everyone else feel?
I think a lot of it, I get conditioned.
Yeah, I agree. John, is that you agree with that? Okay, Bob O'Connor? Good, okay. Janet?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready to read?
Oh, okay. You're so good at it, Janet.
So we'll move to accept with the following conditions, and we have, Erin has provided us with a draft resolution.
There was another condition. You added another condition, right?
It's in here. It's already in.
So she has, she has her, she's going to read that part. Is that in the original?
It's, yes. Yep, it's right on your fourth.
Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application number 2407, 63 Middle Beach Road West, map 15, lot 24, zone R4, owner Earl W. Tucker III, family trust LLC applicant Ron Wassmer. Coastal site plan application to permit construction of terraces and retaining walls within 25 feet of a coastal resource with the following conditions. One, that the zoning enforcement officer be notified at least 48 hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, that all erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance, be maintained for the duration of construction activities, and until the site is sufficiently stabilized to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, that prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, the applicant shall provide to the zoning enforcement officer verification from the floodplain administrator that all landscape activities as constructed and shown in the application documents comply with the Town of Madison floodplain ordinance. In the event that changes to the approved plans are required as a result of other agency permitting to support the proposed activity, the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission preserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the finding that the proposed use is a permitted use in the district, and that the standards, prerequisites, and conditions specified by the regulations have been met. The commission further finds the proposal consistent with all applicable goals and policies in the Coastal Management Act in Section 25 of the Madison zoning regulations. The applicant's effort to maintain adequate soil and erosion controls during construction activities reduces potential impacts to onsite and adjacent coastal resources. The effective date of this approval is April 11, 2020.
Janet, if I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
That's your patience.
Thank you very much.
Happy move.
You say move that plus?
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Appreciate it. Right, so moving right along, we'll jump into the plan of conservation and development update. Thank you, all the commissioners who have given some feedback and requests, and nothing is too detailed, Janet, or nitpicky, John. I agree with that photo of the library. I think that it would be great if we could get a, an updated image.
Easy fix.
And not a construction, a construction site. So, so no comments are too small or too big. And I think that we're going, we'd like to keep, keep it open until Monday for the commissioners. If anyone else has any other thoughts or comments or criticisms or changes or edits or anything, we've all been kind of working on it in different levels. I know I've been trying to aim for consistency throughout, and it's kind of an ongoing process, but I think it's getting better and better. Erin, do you want to, I don't know if you have the latest draft we could pull up?
I, I can pull up the one that.
And Zoe is here.
We've all been working from. Yeah, John is not here this evening. Zoe is here from Tyke to kind of join, you know, as a second set of eyes here and ears to jot down notes for all of you. We did meet earlier today with John to kind of go through our, you know, how we should move forward. We did receive, as Carol said, we received quite a bit of feedback from several commissioners, mostly, you know, grammar kind of things, a few more substantive, but just kind of listing pages, noting things, just in an email format, that's absolutely fine. We've passed that along to Zoe and John and Rachel, and they've been kind of, so they're, they're collecting those comments, they've made some, they're going to review things, and then I think she has essentially put together, you know, the final incorporating all of your comments, hopefully want to post and prepare for the public comment period. We did, I had floated around some dates. John had a couple of dates in June, as you're aware, it's a 65-day referral period for public comment. And so there are no changes that are made to the document within those 65 days. It gives an opportunity, plenty of time for folks to read through the plan ahead of any public comment, public hearing period. So we had looked, counted off 65 days from, it got us into June. The days that worked for John didn't necessarily work for all of our commissioners. So we're, we're now hoping that we can schedule the public hearing for your regularly scheduled meeting on July 11th, which is more than 65 days from now. It's after the Fourth of July holiday, but hopefully we'll have the majority of members available.
Erin, also, you've sent out copies of the draft to stakeholders again, sort of.
I did. So after our last meeting, I followed up, you know, all the folks who are responsible for implementing the plan. I wanted to make sure that they saw their name in the implementation table right before we sent it out for public comment. And so, you know, that, all of those entities have received a copy of the draft you were working off of. Clearly, if there are some minor changes here and there to that plan, those would be reflected in the revised posting. My thought is that once you have consensus over the document, and if you're willing to schedule that public hearing today, and then whatever your last minute comments are for John, we should be able to have and post the final draft plan for public hearing, you know, in the next week or two, and update your working webpage for the POCD, talk with IT to even put just a form to fill out if people had comments that they just wanted to fill out right through the webpage that comes via email, so that we can start just collecting public comment if people may not be away. But it gives us plenty of time to be able to push the document and share it wherever, across all of our many platforms here that we can do that. And then Peggy had requested that Carol or I or both attend the April 29th Board of Selectment meeting just to update the board on their, you know, on, on this latest draft, which really isn't much different from your last conversation with them, but at least it's pretty with pictures, and you can share the public hearing dates and invite them to attend as well. And let's see, as far as otherwise, practice-wise, we had talked a little bit, John, Bob, you mentioned some questions of how a presentation would go. I know we have plenty of time to kind of work that out. But John did agree that Tyke could do a presentation, prepare PowerPoint, but we thought that it probably was appropriate for Carol to, you know, begin the meeting, introduce folks to how the whole process has gone, you know, how you got to where you are, which could take a little time, since it's been a 20-month process here, and then be able to pass it over to John and his team to run through the PowerPoint itself. So I can, I'm happy to pull it up. I don't, I don't know how you want, if anybody wanted to go through anything or comment, instead of, I don't know how detailed you want to get today.
Welcome, Zoe. Zoe, I don't know if we've met you, or if you've met all of us, but did you have anything else you wanted to add to the process? I know anytime we make any substantial changes, your format, the formatting gets thrown out of whack, and all the beautiful images and maps, I know, because I struggled with it myself.
Yes, so the recommendation is to just write your comments in an email, and now let the formatting end of it go through John and Zoe. and now let the formatting end of it go through John and Zoe and Rachel.
Yeah, that'll be the best way, just to make sure that, well, A, so that it doesn't, no, we're not fixing formatting when we should be focusing on the comments. And B, that way we don't miss anything when we're going through it, so. But I think Erin covered all the major points. And yeah, hello, I think this is the first time I'm actually formally introducing myself. I've been a background listener for most of these meetings, so.
But you've been very active in the process behind this. Zoe has done all of your mapping, all of, you know.
And it's looking great. We're all really excited about it.
Thank you.
Anyone, any other commissioners? Bob, did you want to say anything about policies, the implementation?
I have a couple of notes on the policies themselves. Just trying to organize, not organize, just making some small changes to type them up. To make it clear. And then also discussing the implementation plan is an abundant number of actions that are assigned to Board of Selectmen, which I have concern about. And I'm not sure if that's typical or not, but I just think it's going to end up being so much on the plate that I'm looking at. So I'd like to talk, I'm not going to go through, I know John has some comments and wanted emails on some of the policies, rewording them, there were the one I agree with, another one I saw I'd like to propose a small change to it. And then also some of just, is it policy A really?
Erin, could you pull them up because we don't have?
I can go through each one.
Yes, I will. I just didn't want to, while Zoe was talking, I do have it. And then we'll open it up.
The other thing too is we've never as a group gone through each one and say, yes, we all, we all agree, but we all understand what the policy is. You know, you say you do and you're not agreed, but we do that as a group. It's all, it's sort of everyone's credit, but like, everyone.
It's our chance to.
Yeah, this is it. You can just go straight to page. Everything else, anything I talked about can be replied back to the other ones. But if you go straight to page 48.
So Bob, you're gonna, are you gonna follow these in an email for?
I think we all need to agree, I'm not going to give to John, because that John's decision changed that one to make. We need to agree to it as a commission that this is what we should tell John. Otherwise, this is substantial enough that we all need to make. Some are subtle, but some are substantial.
Okay.
So, and John, I'm going to just steal some of the things you said. I'm sure I'm going to miss a couple of them, so just jump in.
I'll jump in.
And anyone else? So I just want to go through some policy A, some policies. On the first one, create a downtown development plan. I think we should strike the building upon the 2005 Bradley Road Vision study. And anything that's 20 years old to me is no longer all that relevant. You can't build upon a 20-year-old plan. So I would just say take that. And then within, and they've got number C, which is as part of the following must be considered recommendations in the original Bradley Road Vision should be considered in that downtown development plan. So subservient, make it subservient to the actual proposal. And I'll write, I'll give you some specifics on how to write that.
I, I, I don't, yeah, I, I would just like to tell you that I had an hour-long meeting this week with someone who specifically wanted me to pull out the 2005 Bradley Road Vision study and go through it for potential picking pieces of that up, which, so it is, I, I do think parts of that are very useful for people. It, it has not been implemented. Some parts of that cannot be implemented because of changes that have happened downtown. But it's, it's worthwhile to reference, so I think
I agree, so C.
That, I think that would be sufficient from my staff's perspective as a C.
That'd be fine. I actually found also lots of extra spaces in this period, but let's get that.
So you're going to send me language for that C? Okay.
Or anything else tonight, too?
Yeah, my notes are a little messy, but I'll type them up. Next one is what John recommended, establish the hub, town as a hub for abundant natural resources. I keep trying to figure out how to make that work, but I can't, and I wrote it. But I, I think we could, we need, we need to strike that or reword it. But I'm fine with just saying, policy B is enhancing connections to nature in Madison. The original intent with that last part was to try to create Madison as a place people come to, to enjoy the natural.
Could you just say that?
We, see, that's what I'm saying, we need to reword it, makes no sense. Didn't make any sense when we did it.
Yeah.
At least in that flurry of editing.
Can you read that again, what you?
Yes, I would strike establish town as a hub for abundant natural resources. Or, last part of the sentence, or.
So just leave it as enhanced connections to nature in Madison?
Yeah, I think that's.
That's what you listed.
Couldn't the town be an example of that? A hub implies something much bigger. But Madison, we're talking about Madison, can they just be an example of how to take advantage of abundant natural resources?
I feel like I want to just say something. Bob, the way you had said it, as you were explaining the original intent, that worked.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to re-say it.
We're going to go back, we're taping, we'll go back to the tape.
So enhanced connections to nature in Madison. I don't know, utilize the natural resources as an attraction, create the net somehow.
We can work on words, if you put those kinds of thoughts and.
To bring people to Madison, not just downtown, but everything else. If we put that in, that would then lead the folks who own it to kind of say, okay, how do we turn all the parks here into something that is attractive people to.
So it might work, like another word.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can work on some wording for that.
That's, I understand what you're talking about.
Gotcha.
Under three on that policy, 3A, the cleaning line acquisition strategy for open space and community facilities. I don't know what community facilities means. And I don't understand why they'd be part of open spaces unless that means parks. But we look things around a lot, but these guys are messed up.
So some open spa, I mean, it could be like beaches, you know, something like that as a facility?
So instead of facility, I think it would be facility as a building.
Okay.
So community resources or community something. Right, C, sample parks.
So B3, all right.
Facilities. Policy C. I would always be strike and integrate them if possible. And again, I love that.
You need to stop reading this.
It's Monday.
Until Monday.
No, it's true though, Bob, you'll drive yourself, I mean, I just know that from my background. You know, you're just, you're changing a million times.
This is my last, my last one.
He's going to squeeze every last bit out of this.
So I don't know how to implement that. And I don't know what it looks like. My original intent was to try to find a way to make cultural landmarks and the light open to the public with general use, but we talked a lot here about public and private. And then that might just cross that line and make things get stuck. You can't get, you can't get access to any, have resources to help preserve a private cultural landmark because then it has people, I don't want to get stuck. And I don't want to tie the hand to the people who signed this to get these things done. So I'm not sure if it adds value. It does in my head, but I'm not sure it adds value as a policy. Fuck me out of it.
I think, I think when you add that, it, it complicates things. It does get you stuck, if you, you know. Right, because there are limitations.
When possible.
When possible, yeah.
Yeah.
I kind of think, how do you then address the aspect? I think part of this policy was not just the preservation, but also enhancing as, as one of the particular qualities of town that is so desirable, both from, you know, and, and how do we highlight this and publicize some of this? Educate people on this?
Yes, education, it's awareness.
Draw in tourism, that kind of thing and enhance this. So that's where I think that integration into the public really was.
How about, how about preserve and promote Madison's historic and cultural landmarks?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
That works.
Yeah, that reaches it, too.
So then it does become a public private.
That's crazy, that's going to like that.
That would then, well, so we use promote, yeah, promote Madison's history to residents are number two.
Social Society does that already to some degree and would certainly like to do more of it. And other institutions also do some of that, if I'm not mistaken.
That's item two.
Yeah.
Policy C2.
Yeah, okay.
And under that on 1C, providing support to Madison's working agricultural land. Should we move that to policy? B, I guess under the open space plan, I think this disconnect, it's not quite a cultural landmark or historic. It's a farm or whatnot. Again, I'm afraid it's going to get assigned to the harbor.
Enhance connections to nature.
I mean, it kind of overlaps both because most of our farms are historic.
It's true that that way, but you're going to end up with just historic farms.
Yeah.
That's fine, I just.
You're right.
These are like disconnects, I want to be sure we, we all talk me out of them on that.
Part of developing an open space, so incorporated as part of the open space plan, add it in there, because otherwise it would be a long-range preservation plan. I mean, some of our farms are, you know, historic in nature, but, I mean, it could work in open space as well.
That's kind of the intent, too, if, if there's a farm that's open space now.
It is more the green space quality, the, the structure. Or stolen law. It is the open space.
The farm is historical. It's also 400.
But by its nature, it could be without having it called out. I mean, we could leave them on both.
No, I would, I would say just, as Bob said, I just don't see the.
3F?
3F.
Okay.
Yeah, or maybe even higher up.
Well, in three, though.
We're not prioritized, we're just listed. That works for me.
Yeah.
All right, I'm up to D now.
Me, too.
Quick play, we're done. Policy D, 3A. There's nothing wrong with that statement. I just have a fundamental disagreement with the idea that we need to put this statement that support enforcement of regulations and call that a specific regulation. It is or it is not a regulation. It's a regulation, it must be supported. By definition, if you can say I'm not going to support it unless you want to change it. You can always change it, but you can't not. The law's the law, right? Can't pick a tree. You can change them. And so I, me, I have a fundamental disagreement with that. You all love it, go with it. I've brought it once before, I think.
Yeah, I don't really think there's harm in that, even it is.
It's superfluous. It gnaws at my meat and edited it out. And then why is that regulation more important than any other regulation we should have?
We just went through examples.
Well, this is specific, this is specific, ensure that inland wetland integrity is protected under number three. And so the best way to protect inland wetland integrity is through the enforcement of our regulations. I mean, that's the number one way. And supporting the agency to do that, I think, is important by having staff, educating them, continuing it and, you know. I don't know, I, I.
I understand that.
Maybe, maybe should we shorten it to just support the inland wetlands and water course agency? Not take away enforcement of regulations because that's their job.
That's fine, that's correct.
Yeah.
So we just take off the regulations?
Yeah, that works.
And then, you know, I think what you're trying to say, Erin, is make sure they have the staff, they have the expertise, they have the training, which we recommend that we all support. That make sense?
Yeah, you're right, then it's not about saying, oh, yeah, we approve that you're working on the regulations.
So Erin, you're keeping the expertise and then Bob, you're going to. Great.
In number five there, I'm not sure if we need, under the achieved silver certification, I'm not sure we need the A and B. Because I think the idea is that we achieve certification should be based on what the state says that is. I don't know what's mandated to do that, or to part. I don't know if A and B are part of it or in addition to it. We can leave them in, I just, to me, it seems somewhat we're done.
I kind of like them the way they are. I think it's nice to call it out in your plan. You want to then create regulations, you know, in development standards or things like that. You can come back to your P O C D and specifically cite that you've identified that as a priority.
Yeah, I kind of like leaving them in.
So should be, there be some additional reference to the Sustainable Connecticut objectives that, you know, list two, should be some reference implied that there's others or that do those, the main thing, to get achieved as a certification.
It's a very lengthy process.
Maybe five, two silver certification for sustainable CT in addition to the state requirements, A and B.
This is a private organization, it's not a state.
Okay, in addition to the, those requirements, between A and B as well. E3.
E3.
I don't understand what that means.
Review major leagues.
I think I just need to be, just need to be explained to me.
So what's our policy?
Review major municipal investment.
Prepare our community to be resilient in the face of climate change and future economic and environmental challenges. Review major municipal investments in infrastructure and physical facilities to address vulnerabilities.
So is this future investments that we're building or is it a retrospective analysis of what we have now? I just don't know. Then I just want to make sure it's clear. It's not, it wasn't clear to me, I would quite sure after you took it down.
Well, the vulnerabilities would imply that you're looking at the current state.
Or future.
Or future.
Conditions.
Or any future development.
So before you're investing, you know, major municipal investments, you need to make sure that in doing so, we're keeping vulnerability, climate change, resiliency in mind.
Should we rephrase it, say, review major municipal infrastructure? Should we rephrase it, say, review major municipal infrastructure and physical facilities to assess vulnerabilities, including all future projects? So that would be look at what we have now, and then apply that same analysis to any future project.
Well, investment implies.
Yeah, investment implies future, but I don't get it. I'm just not, so, I'm just looking at the way.
I kind of read this as before any new investments, this is how you're assessing them. That's how I interpret it, that's how I.
But not current state, current facilities.
Well, I mean, at the same time, we have a facilities committee now that's established that their role is to assess our current inventory for
So, my interpretation is this, if someone came to us and said, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to accomplish this, I'm going to put a policy in place that says all future investors must go through this analysis. They would say they're done, I would agree with them, they're done. All future investments have to do this, they're not going to look to what we currently have to address vulnerabilities. If that's what that's supposed to mean, then it's good. If we want to, when interpreting, we want to make sure it covers current facilities, this building, any other building we have, and we can make that explicit. That's all.
So if we added current and future?
Just make it very clear, all current and future infrastructure facilities must, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, because both current and futures implies, I'm going to just say. Well, it's implied, so I'm going to just say.
Yeah, exactly, I don't want to.
In current and future.
To be very specific. Number four. I will go with what y'all want, but I still don't, I'm still not sure about that. Like how would be implemented?
And I think I had a comment too about particularly the repetitive loss properties that, that kind of troubles me. What, what does that actually mean? People's houses can't keep getting that down the street.
That's what I thought.
Yes, municipalities do that for marsh migration, flood control. Yes. It's part of, it's part of FEMA's guidance, yes, it's, it's a real thing that happens to reduce repetitive loss properties that are in vulnerable areas.
Gilford just did that?
Gilford has, has done this.
Yeah.
He's tabled it. Branford has done this, yes. So when FEMA has repetitive loss properties, that information is available to the floodplain administrator, there's funding opportunities available to help do that. It's not, you know, we may have very few repetitive loss properties in, in town, but that would be something that the floodplain administrator would be able to work with FEMA, have that list of those, and then the town can assess that. And their specific location.
I think Bob's question is how, how, what is the mechanism for us to implement that? Prevent that from happening again? Is that an approval process in the P L Z when someone wants to do something, we say, oh wait a minute, it's in one of those vulnerable areas, you can get washed out of the sea.
It's, it's, it's an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to move forward with funding to purchase these properties, so they're not.
So they'll have an obligation to review it with the FEMA information, so as to assess this property and not do it if it is one of those areas.
And with funding, it's not.
All right, hold on a second.
And when we, when we could talk about it, I think we came to a, I forget who was in the audience, it was. We came to, and I'm saying that would be non-tax based funding.
Right.
That's not going to come from.
There, there's FEMA money available for things like that.
The FEMA money is taxed.
I know, it's tax money. But not, so maybe we need, maybe to make it clear it's not. Even other ones. I have a hard time saying I want to spend the town's tax money on buying a property that's repetitive loss. Most of the property is worth multiple million dollars.
I don't think this says use town fund, I mean, this is.
It also doesn't say, it doesn't say not to use it. Again, it gets to those points, it doesn't exclude it like all the other things, it's interpreted, other funds could mean anything.
Right, well, and I guess, there could be opportunities if you were creating open space or tidal wetlands to use, use funds. I think part of this is analyzing, one, you know, as part of our resiliency plan, where are our vulnerable areas? What are our repetitive loss properties? Does it make sense to put any of these properties on our radar for potential flood control areas as we look at sea level rise and other, you know, opportunities for resilience?
No, that's just serious, we look, we're just in that, that erosion scenario.
Yeah.
Their analysis is right, in twenty, thirty years, in the moderate case, most of the homes along the coast will be halfway.
Circle Beach will be gone. And in fact, there's a, there's a property on Circle Beach, this kind of.
There's another one, but, but there's an empty lot that did have a house on it, Erin, I think we discussed it maybe in that context a little bit about, you know, if they come back with another application to rebuild at that site, you know, which is clearly highly vulnerable. And we'll, you know, I don't know about the other houses, especially, well, the houses I'm still, Circle Beach have been reinforced, but, you know, and I thought, well, okay, would that be a place for water access? And with the town, if the town owned that little chunk, what to do with it? They have rights to, certain rights as a lot, if they can meet.
Right.
Code and goes, you know, to develop.
Well, absolutely, they could still, but.
In compliance with flood regulations and coastal.
Right.
Some regulations, but these are, you know, some of these likely more vulnerable properties are, these are going to be properties that have not ever updated, brought up to flood compliance, or particularly low-lying areas that really are, you know, shown to be inundated over the next, you know, few decades here. So I, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to have this in, it doesn't necessarily, it may not be the highest priority in the implementation table, but it's something to note and would definitely be considered in a climate, you know, or, or coastal resiliency plan.
Would you feel more comfortable, Bob, with some kind, some, a phrase saying at no cost to the town somehow?
Maybe it's, see if you have another non-town source funding.
Yeah.
Just make it clear that it's not, we're not going to ask the residents to pay for the acquisition. Unless we are, like, we want to buy a lot, turn it into a kayak rent.
I think.
That would be different.
But what if it's in our best interest at that time to buy that farm? You don't want to also be eliminated.
I think you should leave it broader and look at specific instances as they.
Case by case.
Of ours.
Okay. What, sorry?
What, we should know what, like?
To, to say that the town, exclusive, exclusive of town money. I don't think we need to do that. But they need to be that specific.
Yeah, I don't.
It's that concern its own approval process. The spending.
It has to be vetted out, yes, through the Board of Selectmen, more to finance, all of that as a public process.
Okay, that's right.
There's nothing that's just written.
Money has to be sourced. John, that was on yours, is it? Does that satisfy you?
I, I think I have a totally different opinion on the repetitive loss properties, which does not seem to square with what, I guess, the rest of the towns are doing. So I, I don't like that we're, we're highlighting repetitive loss properties.
As an objective.
Yeah, strike that, I want, I want to diminish the impact of the, the goal.
That would be something, because that sounds like it's an objective.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could take away the, the last phrase.
Yeah.
Because then, if you think about it, repetitive loss is going to come up as an issue, that would be dealt with through normal.
Through the process.
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay. Sounds good.
That would make me feel better.
Yeah, that, that, I like that, thank you.
You got that, Erin? What's that, take away the particularly repetitive loss properties phrase?
Okay. Just that last.
Just the last.
Focus on.
We'll go last comment.
And in coastal wetland areas, and ended at that.
Yeah.
Is everybody still with us?
Hi, yeah.
Just checking.
I'm quiet for a moment on your end too, sorry. I, I didn't take any notes of the conversation as well.
Okay, great, so we'll, thanks. All of us all will get it.
Actually, F, I'm done.
Okay, are we on F?
We don't have to talk about you.
She is good.
Uh, F, so the first one is John wrote it as well, supporting establishment, two things. Well-designed, I don't understand why that needs to be in there, it's not up to us to turn a business as a well-designed business that the business owner can also get policies. We're not going to be judging N B H S assessing their business opportunity being valid.
I feel like that was added because of the language above in one, where it was focusing on appropriate scale economic development and trying to, I don't know, re, reaffirm that.
Terrify it, yeah.
You know, as far as perhaps, you know, or, or perhaps establishing other, you know, outside of the downtown village district, but perhaps you establish other village districts, others, that have other standards. You know how you have a certain level of design standards within, that you can review within a designated village district? So say there was a North Madison Village District, you can establish some level of standards there that you could hold businesses to as far as.
On what?
Their appearance, the building's appearance.
That's different, that's different.
That's more like character.
I, I, well-designed, as there's a strong business plan, it has a great chance for success. It's built on a solid base and it will flourish. I don't know, that's, if it's well-designed, meaning it fits within the, the
Character of the town.
Character of what we're trying to create.
Architectural standards.
Fits within the, the style of business you want, that's a different thing to be the one.
That's more congruent.
That's all, so we're, that's.
Business plan versus architecture.
That's why I say some, I'm interpreting it only differently. That's why I'm interpreting, right? Me, well-designed, it's like, no, that's a terrible idea.
So what, how else would you word, I mean, I think, I think that added a level of comfort to folks when we were talking about this encouragement of some other economic development within town, but noting that wherever it goes, that it needs to be appropriately scaled. You know, the word character is not a friendly. But that's, that's what's written in, in one. So did you want to use the same wording? Or we could just ask John to look for a.
Just take away B.
No, because the, the point was to.
Outside the downtown village districts.
To allow for some level of appropriate.
But, but remember now, the, the idea here is that the goal is identify opportunities for expanding appropriate scale economic development in certain.
It doesn't say anywhere.
That's, someone will be assigned that goal, some entity. Then the following must be considered. I think if you want to meet that, it's just something we say, and you got to make sure you do this, we at least talked about it, we think about it.
And you have retail businesses appropriate for the town. So well-designed businesses, I mean, that implies you're talking about the business itself, not, or are we more concerned about the structure? And being consistent, like.
Well, people are, I think, in adding commercial development, people are going to look at both uses and the appearance of these buildings.
Through well-designed, is that about the appropriate use, or was that?
Could apply to both, clearly.
That's brief.
But not, it's not clear, I guess. You're right.
Yeah, I mean, you can interpret it either way, as it's written. Bob had this, Bob, your hands raised?
No, it, it just seems to me, well-designed, I don't know what that means, again. I think we're not talking about the structure, or are we? Whether the business plan of the enterprise is well-designed really isn't our business.
Right, in F, it says retail business appropriate for the town.
Appropriate is fine.
Right, so then well-designed business is kind of the, what it's really called.
I, I think the word we're looking to include is aesthetic somewhere. That's a bit, that sounds what's missing, but that's what he's getting at, and that makes a lot of sense. It's not, it's aesthetically. Now, we seem, don't seem to be the rational.
So try to find a word.
That's the word to put in something like that.
Something like that.
Oh, Erin, the last one, I, well, the last one is I need your, I need help from you on three. You were telling me with three B, why did I get that down? Um, I still don't understand three A, what that means. It's, you couldn't, just don't understand. Can you explain the?
Three, so F, three A?
Three A.
Three A under.
Oh, revising the zoning regulations to simplify the targeted zoning districts that were developed for individual projects and convert to a more comprehensive special development district approach.
With all the appendices and stuff in.
The special exceptions?
Well, there is, there is a packet that shows where they are.
Yeah.
But this is the entire section four point one, that are all site-specific, special exception, uses by property.
They name, you know, property, they can find by the properties found, yeah.
We want to, we want to make sure that, as we're updating our zoning regulations, that we find a more appropriate, uniform way of.
Okay.
Yes, identifying them.
Putting them into it, I got it, I understand it, it's possible, I'm trying to.
Essentially, they were, they were treating special exceptions like P, like little P V Ds, but they weren't doing them.
Yeah, okay.
Response on them.
Yes, by doing that via special exception, the commission was not following that uniformity clause within, throughout the song, so.
Reach it up and see how we can.
Yeah, try to find a legal floating type tool to incorporate all of those that were previously approved.
And that's it, then, the only thing I have, I would want to talk about, but want to ask if anyone else has thoughts on anything to be, if last thing I need is just the implication.
So let's see, is everybody else fine still on the policies, if we.
Policies are good, skip to that.
I am.
I have one question on the conclusions.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that, that's before.
We're skipping it.
Yeah.
I mean, we did talk about even taking out conclusions, I think we've.
Well, some of the conclusion, you talked, but the elimination of that may be challenging for Mike Bugda, because in that conclusion is where we summarize a lot of the compliance with the state's plan, the statutes, things like that, but let's hear yours, John.
So in the third paragraph there. Let me just read what I sent you. The middle of the third paragraph reads to me as if the problem with downtown development, particularly the mixes of businesses and failure restaurants, is due to the lack of a sewer system. Was that the intention of the, of the, of the wording? I mean, if it was, I don't think that's true. Moxie and Elizabeth didn't close because of wastewater issues. And I, I think generally. And I, I think generally banks, realtors, investments companies want to be in downtown because of it's an affluent community and that's where the people are going and that's where they have visibility, so I, that. It, it, it kind of read to me like, okay, we're going to blame all those problems on wastewater problems, which I don't think is true.
I agree with you, I don't think that's, I, I think septic can, should be.
We could, it, I, I think, I don't think, I, I don't think, was that the intention? I don't think that was the intention, but the way I read it, it seems to be intentional. So maybe just reword it so that you know, there's, we, we want to address stormwater management wastewater issues throughout the town. Um, especially downtown. Um, and we also would like to diversify the businesses within. Which is kind of two different.
That's, yeah, definitely that.
So it's the current economy section, that sentence that we want to re.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rework that so it doesn't seem.
Yeah.
I agree, I think we can.
That can be cleaned up and made better, and it's a good point, John. I mean, it is limited, I think that the, the lack of a sewage treatment.
There was sewer avoidance, right?
Yeah, well, and it's limited some of them, but it's not the reason why the business is a fail.
Area downtown as well, there are, there are septic limitations, more so in certain properties than others.
Sure, right.
Um, and, and we do focus on that in the plan and highlight the need to, to study these areas, both from a engineering perspective and also from an economic development perspective. If we were going to look at some type of centralized system, what does that mean?
Yeah.
And is it worth it, really?
I think, I think we'd be foolish to think that that's going to keep restaurants a business. The, the, the national turnover on restaurants is every couple of years. Sometimes they close because they're just, they're tired. You know, they, someone else makes it, that's. Nice to have a septic system.
Okay. That's a good suggestion, thank you.
All right.
And before we go to implementation.
Yes. Implementation.
I was busy with my grant, so I didn't sleep the three nights because I was teething, I haven't slept. I made, I made an all implementations. The, within the policies and goals. Uh, at one point we talked, we have the I can't remember what one of these now, but there is the goal of, or at least the, it must include a consideration of the creation of a forest management plan and plan for trees, uh, land management on.
Yeah.
Town property. But we did not include, there was a brief discussion we had about the management of trees on private property. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not convinced it should be in this document, I'm not sure convinced it should not be, but we haven't.
Addressed it.
Addressed, it just kind of it just fell to the side.
Fran's going to speak of that, that later, FYI.
Well, y'all spoke about it the other time, so that's what I'm referring to is, is that conversation we had. So I think we need to talk about, I mean, part of it is.
This one.
Yeah. So within a P O C D, my experience now comes to the, I don't know how far-reaching into private land rights, the P O C D typically go. This is a far-reaching change within Madison public land rights. I'm more comfortable saying the, what is actually needs to consider.
Well, I think they're going to be considering, I think that's what you've been working on, right? The draft ordinance for.
We all need to talk about it.
The board to review.
Whether we should put it in here.
Or is it here, sorry?
So in, in D, number four is this increased active management of trees along the public way and within town properties, including the development of forest management plan for town properties.
Right.
So some of this was, you know, the the feedback received and, and I know I suggested the, the need for like a tree replacement program when the town removes trees within the right of way, is there a plan for replacement of these? We did not, all of our previous, up until the more recent tree conversations since the, the winter club clearing, that the feedback you had and when we drafted this did not speak to private property. So this is, this is newer since you've drafted this. So yeah, the question is, do you want to add some language for protection, or do you want to let it go as its moving course? Now, I, I, I understand you have a draft, right, that you're ready to present to the board or to the town?
We have one more week, we've been working on this for, um, how many, six weeks now, we had, we've met three or four times. We made great progress, we, we have one more review uh, next week, so yeah, we're very close.
So it's going to evolve during our.
As an ordinance?
That's how it's being proposed, right?
It's comprehensive, it's a proactive management.
Yeah.
Uh, plan. With the word, our use of the word management is different than that use of the word management.
Right, right.
So I, that's one point I wanted to make, but, uh, but to answer your question, it's an ordinance plus a tree advisory commission that would be looking after replacement ideas promoting.
As well as doing an inventory of important historic old healthy trees, yeah, no, I live in a town where we have that. Yeah.
But it just, right now, we're I'm, we're still.
Yeah, so thinking of the timing of it, I mean, how can we, what can we add to this that would keep it going in that direction?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're ready for, are we ready for this conversation?
You can get through the rest of this and your comments and then leave it up and talk about trees.
Through the last one, then we'll get, then we'll go back to this.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up, make sure we know. Okay.
Good, we'll get back to trees. I mean, I think that could also, you also have the option of you can leave what's in your plan and listen to public comment and then consider whether or not you want to address that section or add something else. And that gives some time to let things kind of work through over the next sixty-five plus days.
Yeah. I mean, also, you know, I'm going to say again that this, it's supposed to be a living document. So if the tree, the timing of a tree ordinance doesn't work out, I mean, I, I don't know how, I don't know how long that process will take.
Yeah.
And if we're, if we're kind of running neck and neck, or you know, do we, as you say, do we get feedback and put it in between now and our July?
Or you, that, the, what I was saying was you can leave what you have, allow them to finish their process and they may propose something to you during the public comment
Yeah.
of a specific section that they think should be added. Another sub-section to that, you know, another line item, and that may help as you're working through, you don't have to.
We want to see that.
Yeah.
So we're happy to hear something about it tonight too, though, to see where you are and how you're approaching it.
Right, the public hearing.
Been a lot of work in here already, it sounds like, yeah.
Is our chance to revise about it.
Is for you to consider the public, you know.
Absolutely.
Or, or anything leading up to that is for you to then consider. You know, may, maybe it is worthwhile at that point after things have kind of evolved and that you add another.
That's a good point.
Line to that, rather than kind of.
And at least we've got a placeholder here in that, in that statement.
It's easy to add something along those lines.
So let us, let us just run through to the end of the document and then we'll come back and hear where you are and we can see where we go from there.
So are we on implementation, we're okay, the rest of conclusions was all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Policies are good, conclusions are good.
Oh, one question that came through in implementation was whether or not it was worthwhile to put, which I'm now recalling, I think we kind of decided not to, associating any timeframes with high, moderate, low or ongoing. It, it may limit you to say years one through three, four through.
I don't think we should.
Okay, I, I wanted to make sure that we addressed that before moving. So.
Yeah, just go to page, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go to page sixty-four is an example. And actually.
Wait, six, oh, I'm on, I'm sorry.
There you go, so first of all, number two doesn't have a lead entity.
Wait, what?
Number two doesn't have a lead entity.
Policy A two.
I hit the wrong button.
There you go.
It's missing the. Policy A, number two.
So I think that was one that I, we had briefly.
I don't know who.
So some of these were, and I talked to John about your concerns with adding Board of Selectment to them. And the Board of Selectmen will give us feedback on whether or not they, they want nothing to do with some of those things. But the reason in a small town why we added the Board of Selectmen as a lead entity is because they're the ones who would fund and allocate and, and give direction to one of the committees to do this, so really they, you know, for example, this, this master plan, BPAC will likely own it, but the Board of Selectmen needs to give that authority to them, so some of, that's why the Board of Selectmen are involved in, in some of these, as leads.
Actually, we'll do it in a box.
That would say, yes, I think that one should have said Board of Selectmen, it was just deleted. But in, in some of the other ones where Board of Selectmen are noted. And, and perhaps we'll get feedback from them that says, now we prefer that you put the committee as the leader. And if that's the case and they acknowledge that they're supporting, that's fine, we can, we can swap those out.
Okay.
Um, that, that was sort of my approach, let's hear from them if they.
Yeah.
That's fine. And then, and what's the reasoning for the other one not being Board of Selectment? So you're, I understand your point.
Well, they're more department-handled, so some of these other ones aren't necessary, they don't necessarily fall under a, a department within the, a designated department within the town. Does that make sense, like Beach and Rec?
Like Conservation Commission is not a department, is it?
No, but by law, they are responsible for creating natural, that's a shall in their statutes. They're, they're the entity for that.
Guess it goes back to if the idea is that they will assign some entity as the lead entity, each one, I understand that, but I just be direct. They have an assignment level of the use of company.
So.
I don't think, I don't think they'll get done.
How about, I mean, they would also, if there's a, like a, a master plan similar to like a strategic plan, they would adopt that. So they would be the body that would adopt that master plan.
Right, but not drafted, not, so I guess maybe it's, so as an example, under C for established funding.
Let's find.
Established funding for protection and restoration of historic landmarks through grants and other sources. They're going to assign that to someone, I'd rather just assign it to that, that someone now. And so we can see if there's too much being.
Established funding for the protection of this one and restoration of historic landmarks through grants and other sources?
That kind of historic district commission would do.
They don't have the authority to establish any funding.
Funding side of it that falls back or goes back up to the Board of Selectmen.
That's.
And I'm new to this, I just, when I see that and you sign to the executive function within the organization, Michael says it'll never get done. That's just telling you straight, I know I'm being recorded, that was the aim, but that's okay. It's just my, my gut reaction to that is that's too much on their plate for to get done unless the direction is, we don't know, you pick the person.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with that.
Or, you know, because they know funding and budgets and staffing.
We can change the wording to.
Yeah.
Establish a budget for the protection, establish the required necessary funding. Not that they get it, but someone has to tell them how much they.
I mean, in reality, a lot of this, when it's a board or a commission, is going to fall on staff to be assisting these commissions to get stuff done. I mean, that's.
Word of selection.
Why am I fourth meeting this week? So you.
It's resource allocation, right, so if we do it the right way, we'll be able to highlight that there's not enough resource, let's say the historic district commission ends up on twenty of these. That's not going to get done either because there's too much for one.
And I'll say as an alternate for the historic district commission, I mean, I know, Aaron, you and I have talked about this too, that, you know, when it came time, like for ten years, they were saying, let's get certified local government status. And it never happened and then I just did it. So it takes like one person, you know, that, it's sort of the opposite of the Board of Selectmen, it goes down to like one person who's just going to take this on and.
And I think part of this is, we're at a, a good point because with the adoption of the, the most recent charter, all of these boards and commissions need to be, that are not established via charter need to be established by the Board of Selectmen via ordinance.
And that's in the.
And they had two years to do that, so this is the last year to establish these commissions. So that's why you've been working with the commissions now, developing charges. And so having the timing of this, you can build some of this language in to these commissions as their responsibilities. So, and, and now we're having open conversation between the Board of Selectmen who are appointing them to do these jobs. And, and so perhaps that's all they're doing at this point, and now it's the commission who needs to take the lead and say, okay, look, we've come up with this RFP, we need to do this or hire a consultant to do this.
Get this guy out.
It's going to cost this much money, now we're to you looking for the funding and the resources to help do that.
I think it's in the strategic plan too, of the restructuring of committees and commissions.
There's a consolidation thing, and that's another point why sometimes the Board of Selectmen, I, my recommendation was to put them as the lead entity. Because we've talked about definitely consolidating the number, we have an overwhelming amount of committees and commissions and we, we would like to condense some of them and merge. And the Coastal Resiliency Commission is a good example, they will, they will not be known as the Coastal Resiliency Commission. And, and perhaps we'll change their future name to this, they're going to be the Climate Resiliency and Flood and Erosion Control Board. So we're merging the Flood and Erosion Control Board with the Coastal Resiliency Commission into one. We've talked about having a more cohesive, uh, historic presence in town or preservation of our resources. Perhaps representative from the Historic District Commission, the Historical Society, getting some of these groups together to think a little broader beyond their own scope, so, but those groups haven't yet been established, so kind of landing it in the board, we've had conversations about this, but nothing has been formalized yet, so.
I get, I get your point, yeah, yeah, I get.
It's not perfect.
But would it, so to that would it be more on the point then to leave them as blank? So there is no lead entity because we could not identify the appropriate lead entity and where there is no one, the Board of Selectmen needs to choose or establish a commission to hold this.
I don't see a problem with you giving it to them, if they're unhappy, they'll let you know. I'd rather give it to someone than not give it to anyone.
It'll get resolved eventually is what your point is.
I don't think it should be left blank. So I think that looks like we're not finishing our job.
I put down the action one on the bikes.
How about we get feedback from the Board of Selectmen?
That's a good, that's good.
Yeah. I've sent it to them, you know, as a comment, and I think they will.
If we can trust with them, how they want us to, to trust the.
Possibilities.
Well, and maybe that's a good conversation when Carolyn, out you go on the twenty-ninth, to say, look, you're going to see your name a lot.
That would be good, that would be good.
And this is the reason why we put your name here.
Because we do have a chance.
Would you rather not?
Again, I'm fine with that, I just want to, I want to push the issue a little bit. I'm fine with that. I just want to, I want to push the issue a little bit because it screams to me that.
And I, I, I agree with you that if you just leave it for Board of Selectmen, it could just disappear into a black hole.
I'd like to.
Bring it up at the meet. I think that's the best.
Well, I mean, you know, moving beyond this plan, although it's not written in here, you know, you can help facilitate the implementation of this plan by inviting representatives from some of these other, uh, you know, entities as, as a working group to meet quarterly every other month to say, hey, let's check in on this. Are you guys doing that? Or, you know, that kind of stuff.
I agree. I like that.
As I just told you, we don't need another committee.
I like that.
But that could work to.
But then oversight.
Brings the voice.
Quarterly check in.
Yeah, then it doesn't sit on a shelf.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree with that.
Did anyone find any of these that, I mean, so the policy, the action items are specifically cut from the policies. Those shouldn't change. But they will, whatever changes we make in the policies will reflect in the implementation table. So we're uniform. But see, I mean, aside, I have not heard any feedback from any of the stakeholders that I, you know, the commissions or boards that I sent these to. Complaining yet that they've recognized their name in here. Um, because most of them have given us this feedback.
Yeah.
But if you, I mean, this is the one that I haven't really heard back from you guys. I mean, I just filled it in what I thought
Nearly.
was appropriate, but I've, I'm open to.
I think it looks great.
I actually think we forgot anything.
And you and I have talked about a couple of inconsistencies, like make sure it's moderate and high, not medium and high.
I saw that in one of them too. Yes.
Policy G has under one undertaken periples assessment of that, including, that was from a previous edit.
Yes.
Needs to go.
G one. Yep.
Yeah. And I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at the state draft, but the number of policies they have, I think it's seven.
Yeah.
Yay.
That seems to be a magic number. But, and I think it strengthens the policies to have it. Because have it. Implement it this way.
Definitely, yeah.
For sure.
So we'll.
Uh, Bob does not have his hand, but I can stop sharing if you're ready, or did you want to go through more?
I have nothing else to keep it up there. I will go longer.
Keep it up for you?
We have something on that.
No, I'm not.
Okay, great.
Well, that was, that was really good though.
Here's what.
To get us all to really sit down and go through it together, I'm really happy with that.
Circling back to trees.
First of all, I want to say you guys, I am so impressed. I'm really proud of what you guys are doing here. You know, I am. This is a tough thing you're doing. And you've got the patience, you know, and the politeness and the empathy. Doing it.
Has a little sense of humor.
I think we had that sense of humor in the early ones.
Low points.
It's month twenty, it kicked in.
Skinniness.
Beginning.
Just re-introduce myself. Fran Brady, One O H Genesee Road, co-founder of Mad for Trees, member of a team of seven. Half of them are here to, that we've been assigned by the, by you and the Board, well, the Board of Selectmen, especially assigned us to look into writing the tree ordinance. By the way, it's going to be written so well, this guy's not going to be flabbergasted. He's going to love it. It's going to be, I've already seen it. It's well, well-written. I had a couple of points. First thing, following Robert Ryan's approach to this, uh, if you could go to policy B to C, I just have a recommendation.
Under policies, not.
Oh, back up the top, yeah, the very eyes of, as the author, founder, main participant and spouse of every single example shown fill in that one, you don't need to have the examples there. I agree with you on that approach. Take them out. Mad for Trees.
Actually, we talked about that at other meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, should we.
Mad for Bs, my wife, it doesn't exist anymore. It's, it's the, it's the Madison pollin, pollinator pathway.
Right.
So it's no Mad for Bs, but it's just there's a pollinator pathway. But that's the point. At least changed the flux, they changed names.
Take it out.
Take it out.
As I said, take it out. I, the, the single use, I wrote that order. It's done. You don't have to put it up there anymore. No more May. It's going to be no more April. I mean, because.
Yeah, it's a pollinator.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just wanted to follow that.
How could you take it out?
The real reason I was here was, um, seeing what you wrote, I got two points up and I'll read if you don't mind. I'll be brief. Uh, the most recent draft, this working draft of the new P O C D does not mention tree preservation. It only uses the word management and a cynical person could also say that this actually sounds like you're in favor of thinning out the forest, you know, that's what, that's the kind of words they use. They manage the forest. By taking out burning things and cutting, you know. So I'm a little sensitive about the word management. I, I hope you don't feel that way. The current, the one we're under now, the twenty thirteen P O C D has good wording. Why can't we go back to it? We would like to see that the wording like uh, regulations to address clearcutting of trees. That's what was in there before. Clearcutting of trees is a big concern of ours. Um, so I'm, I'm just concerned about the change in emphasis. There's probably a reason. The second point I wanted to make is that through our work of, uh, developing the ordinance, we've done a lot of, uh, research, a lot of research and Yukon has a, uh, a group called CLEAR, uh, but they have.
Yes.
Yeah, they have the, uh, Forest Fragmentation Study online. You can put your town in and it will pull up data about tree canopy. It's all there. In fact, I think the whole country has this, but Yukon has, is the holder of ours. And based on that satellite data, let's see, the tree canopy of the town of Madison has lost more than six percent of its canopy and, and since nineteen eighty-five. That's up to twenty fifteen. So from nineteen eighty-five to twenty fifteen, we lost six percent, that's almost a thousand acres we lost. And there's work that says conservatively a thousand acres is equal to a hundred thousand trees. So that's up to two hundred thousand, that's up to twenty eighteen. Since twenty eighteen, things gotten worse with the drought and the bugs and the, and the weather. So I just got a, I just got a text from, from, um, Scott Murphy showing me a beech tree in his backyard that snapped. I said, I'm, I'm like, I'm immune to these now because they're snapping everywhere, not just beech trees, oak trees. Why? I don't know. I'm not the expert.
Part of it is higher winds.
Higher wind, but we had a drought for a long time. We really weakened the trees.
And now we're in like a kind of flood era.
Money areas, now we're going to have roots coming up. All I'm saying is there's data that shows we've lost a thousand acres. And guess what? We've lost a lot more than that since then.
And no replacement.
Just out of curiosity.
And no replacement.
Does that thousand acres, I don't know, does that thousand acres include or would it now include what the utility company is doing?
Yeah.
Okay. There, we have no say over that.
Right, no, I agree. I agree. The point is it's an uphill battle.
But it's just, but it's included in our overall loss is the number they did. So if you back that out, are the numbers as dramatic or as?
Big question.
Probably more dramatic.
They separated an amount.
It's going to be more dramatic now, but if you took that back, would they be still advancing more so? We don't know because the data is now eight years old.
All I know is that, um, when you compare us, all the towns, a hundred sixty-nine towns in Connecticut, we are dark green. We're not the darkest green. We're dark green and that, the darker you are, the greater the percentage of loss of trees is. So as what we could control, ever source wasn't in that, in that, in that study at that time. So
Yeah.
Under our control, we've got, we have not done anything to improve things. I mean, it's only gotten worse. It's just my point. And so preservation, I don't know, um, planting, restoring is a important factor of what we're going to put in, in one of the, in our tree committee part of this. So I, I'm not, I wasn't prepared to give you nothing on what we're, what we've got done so far. I was here to, to comment on the, the the way this is devolving. And maybe I'm repeating what I said before, the plan of Conservation Development had some good things in it and now they're missing. I hope that we could.
So that word changed to the word management is troubling.
It's troubling in that, in that single sentence, the way it is. If it had maybe some backup bullet points underneath it, maybe that'd feel better.
I think management came from Heather. Heather came to the meeting and said, we need to have forest management.
If you look at what I presented, it was proactive management. So again, but that came with power.
Context of the.
The context, I agree.
Of, of where the word management came from and then.
Remember, we had a big discussion about changing that.
Yeah, we did. Thinking that we were doing right.
Well, maybe I'm, I'm looking for just a couple more words to go with it.
Proactive with.
Sorry, the principles of what management means kind of.
I, I think that can come.
Preservation.
I, I'd kind of like see what you guys bring in.
If you wanted to. Say what? Silviculture is actively managing forests, but it's, that's not really what we're talking about. That's for the forests up in the northern part.
Right.
Water district. Where they, they manage the trees. They even burn.
But what, part of our presentation included, um, like you said about the wetlands, having the right staffing. That, that's in there. I wouldn't mind seeing that as part of the management, you know, and more educated staff to do it. So the same thing that you wrote for inland might go well with the tree part of this. So.
And feel free to send us edits if you want to make those edits.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you have language that you'd like to see?
I, I think that's a great opportunity for the public.
Yeah.
Part because I think that gives you time to release what your ideas are. It's, it's going to be discussed a little bit. It also gives the, you an opportunity to kind of hear from not just your working group, but the public as well, uh, at the Board of Selectmen meeting to, to kind of formulate some additional points that you'd recommend for that section.
Another issue that's, that's come up in conversation is, you know, having like solar panel farms where you clear cut and then put in solar panels, you know, and every time I see one now, I just kind of cringe. Like what was lost to, you know, it's.
I just stayed at a hotel last night in Philadelphia where they had, I was there a year ago. In that year, they put up solar panels all over the whole entire parking lot. It's huge. It's, it's, it's as big as downtown, all these overhead park, uh, solar panels.
On non-permeable surfaces.
That's what we should do. Don't, don't cut down trees and put solar panels.
Right.
There's a, there's a, I'm in this bit, I'm in that bit. So there's, there's a non, there's been a number of non-permeable surface acts arose. No one will go for it. It's very expensive to put up those solar canopies. Their carports are canopies on top of decks. Just mainly because the cost of steel goes pandemic. Um, but there are ways in defense of, you know, I'm not there clear cutting, but there are ways in certain areas of land that it's, it's nice to put the solar in it and you can have active management, pollination trails. You can have, you know, grass to grow, there's agrofol. There's, there's a lot of things around there. So it's just a, a plot, but it doesn't, you know, it, it, it's not, it's not bad. It's just.
There's a way to do it.
There's a way to do it and there's a way not to do it. And where everything's headed, especially in Connecticut, is really moving that to, to brown fields and to cap landfill, super fund sites, that type of stuff. Or agri. Where, you know, there's remediation needs to be done anyway.
Maybe one last thing I'd throw out to Aaron here. Um, there's going to be a discussion I'm going to have with a number of different people in the town about, um, building a coalition of groups that are into keeping Madison green. And we're thinking of a catchy name like Sustainable Madison Coalition. But trying to tie together.
Are, are you going to spearhead the certification process?
I would be glad to put that as a bullet point underneath one of the things we do, but we'll have trees on there, we'll have bees on there, we'll have.
I think that's what's made other towns successful is having a border.
But it's not going to be, it's not going to be part of the town. It'll be more private, but we can help support the town in reaching their goals.
Well, I mean, that's the only way really this whole the certificate, and that's the way the certification process is designed is to, for the town to truly implement these into their regular, uh, operations. And that's what's making it challenging. I think that's because it's so piecemealed. Um, and having a, a small group with the Conservation Commission working towards that certification is.
And I'm looking at having a coalition of, you know, dozens of people move into the direction to, you know, get things accomplished.
Did you have something you wanted to say too?
Yes, um, so I just wanted to.
Can you write it for yourself?
My name's Amy Thomas, um, I'm at thirty-four River Ridge Road. Um, I, uh, I, I, you know, just echoing what Fran said, I've been involved, um, since, I've been concerned for a while, but involved in the past couple of months. Contacted Aaron in January, came here in February. Um, Aaron had shared the, the working draft with me and just echoing what Fran said, I mean, my concern is, um, you know, we talk a lot about supporting our natural resources and there's one mention of trees in the document.
I guess we think it's, you know, it's assumed and that we all know that, but if it needs to be said.
Yeah.
We need to hear you sell us that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's the point. I mean, this document is important. What we're trying to do is important, but it's also just a, a kind of hopefully a mentality that we can all adopt that, that trees are resources that need to be protected and preserved. Um, you know, it, there's so much great support of the wetlands and the coastline. There's just like a great emphasis on Madison being a coastal town, but there's also a lot of trees and forests and a lot of shore trees and, um, I just want, like, really, really love to see that support and that, you know, breadth of thinking around, you know, that strategy, um, and maintenance. Um, so, yeah, I came tonight to just make that, you know, sort of reiterate the request. I think it's for D now, um, the one, the one.
Where we talk about trees, the one tree.
Yeah, yeah, increase the active management of trees. Um, I, I had just said, you know, it'd be great to extend preservation efforts to literally call out trees. So it's not considered, you know, like just the slots of forests in northern Madison, but actually trees across the whole town, um, and just recognizing their points with the whole ecosystem.
We also, we had conversations about how to define open space and, um, and I'm thinking of it too more, sort of maybe more holistically of ecosystems, you know. So when you say wetlands, you know, to me that includes trees. Of course it does. Or, you know, some precious little salt meadow trees that, you know, we, we just sort of assume, but if it needs to be said, then.
I mean, yeah, and I don't, you know, I, I would like to see it because it's kind of one of the lines Bob was saying. It's like, you know, we're just assuming it, but why not, why not say it?
Get it in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, you know, state land, water company land, private land. And, you know, I cringe anytime I see a tree come down too.
And replacement, maybe we should also.
Which Mad for Trees has done a great job, I think, of, you know, getting the word out and getting us, although my tree was only this big.
Policy B, um, talks about, you know, natural resources. I mean, trees are a natural resource and supporting education on them, focusing environmental stewardship. I mean, that language is in here. Incorporating educational programs, creating a public portal on education and providing resources about the natural environment. That could be very broadly used to address.
But I think it might, I, I agree that that's was there. And, you know, intent was to educate one on what's important.
And then also expanding the community's engagement in natural resource stewardship programs. So there's language there that could support any of those.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't call, I mean, it, it doesn't call out trees specifically, but I don't think it excludes trees either, the way that it's.
I think one, one thing I was concerned about was if it's not promoted in, you know, in a way in the P O C D, it was in two thousand thirteen. If it's not in the current one and we're being asked to draft a tree ordinance, they should be in agreement. There should be something in the P O C D.
That you can reference.
That you can reference, that supports. I mean, if we're going to.
Want to go in your rooms.
Right. And when it doesn't say that,
And when it doesn't say that, somebody could say, "It's not even in here."
Doesn't have trees.
Yeah, it was in 2013, it's not in here now. You clearly left it out for a reason. A tree ordinance should be shot down.
It's 2013.
I don't think that.
Put it up, but, um.
Well, in ordinance, I think that was the suggestion of the board, that your, you know, the concerned residents came to the board asking for change, and, and the board said, "If you'd like, show us something, show us what you want, right, what you're proposing." So I, I think, I, I don't see how that's inconsistent with anything that we've, I don't think anybody could look at that and say, "That's, that's not something that's supported by the POCD."
It's just saying two separate things. How do we tie them together? So that it's clear from anybody reading.
Well, my recommendation on that would be to get further along in your process, because we still have time to add language. Let this develop a little bit, fine tune, and then come back with a more specific, you know, something that encompasses that as a line item.
Yeah.
If we should, if that's the task, if we should actually write the line items, um.
I just think it's, this is gonna get vetted, right, at, over the next two months, at some point.
It had been brought up, and it had not been included, so that's part of the concern.
But you can write something.
Sure.
Yeah.
So we can look at Policy D, take goal number four, which is.
This is the first one that we can use.
What letter is that? Oh, 4D.
You can turn 4D into a goal of tree preservation or something. A could be the active management of trees on public way, B could be, C could be.
Yes.
And so drafting that language then would be helpful. And go forward with that process, and then bring it up at the public hearing, that we're looking for.
That's a great.
Between wait, after wait, you just keep pushing, ready.
So, did Zoe get that?
Zoe's listening, yeah.
Well, we're not, Zoe's not gonna draft it.
No, no, no.
We're, we're gonna leave this, and then that was a.
No, that part, that'll let the ordinance, that'll allow you to move forward with the ordinance, right? And then, and if you get the ordinance, there may be everything we need. You may not be in anything in the POC, POCD. But if not, Policy D, goal four is where you would expand.
Well, we should point to it, though, as you.
That's what I'm saying, would you be?
Yeah, man, you can point exactly, you can do anything, point to it.
Would having wording about a tree ordinance, and the, the POCD be fine? Even before it's been vetted totally?
My personal opinion is that you should kind of bring this out as, and keep continuing on your path before we change a specific language in that.
This is great, you know, what's new today for me is that I can be an author of the POCD. I could be a contributing author.
Anyone can suggest, I mean, that's, that's what this process has been, and so I think.
You've been assigned 40.
Based on your homework.
Yeah, you know that line you always say.
Nobody appreciate that, and it's great to have, you know, face-to-face conversation about it. And I think we all kind of agree with you, so I don't think it's a problem.
Would, would it make sense to, just at a minimum, just for number four there, add active management and preservation of trees?
I like preservation and also.
Going in, as a going in.
Great. And just the statement, so on to the policy, the active management preservation.
And, and as renewal, I mean, we've gotta talk about replacement.
I think that, that is.
Is that implied?
I saw that as part of the management.
But I think when they're saying, maybe something different.
Could be, yeah.
That's where we don't.
Yeah.
We don't wanna say the wrong word.
Four does not apply to private property. I mean, that's, that line item does not address your other. The other aspect of private property, I think, would be under really more of that natural resources section and the educational of that, where that is now.
I disagree, disagree. The Policy E is about sustainability of natural resources.
Public and private.
Public and private. And so what you're saying is correct. In, in the above one, you're talking about Policy B, right?
Well, I'm just saying this line does not apply to private.
My suggestion was to take that line and make it item A, and create a new goal of preservation, blah, 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 of trees, whatever you all say. Start the drafting, and we'll have, we'll have to own it and change it as we need to, to make it fit. But get it, if you create that higher level goal, and then underneath it is your land management on public, tree management on public, town property, and then some other thing that references the ordinance or something that the ordinance is trying to achieve as another, it should also, it must consider A and B underneath.
I, I don't, yeah, but you haven't seen any draft language for an ordinance.
I'm not saying, I don't know, but we're not, that's why, I'm not doing it now.
How we can edit this to make it.
I'm not doing, no, I would say we don't change anything now, otherwise we'll be.
Yeah, we're never gonna get a document out to the public.
Everyone's agreement, we can say this is done, and we can move forward with the public, just get a public hearing.
I think we should.
This comes forward at the public.
Feedback, you know, like we are from you now. I mean, that's great.
Would you wanna say something else?
Yeah, it's all, it's all less necessary, and, and I appreciate this conversation, but I, I, yeah, I did wanna, t, 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 trees are not the only issue I care about, but, but when we see the lack of inclusion in there, which is why I'm glad it's been spoken about, uh, es- especially compared to coastal protection and coastal resiliency, those, those cannot be, th- those are much less likely to be subject to, to misuse. And, you know, we, I've, we've had experiences, the Winter Club notably, and a, and a, a private residence also that, that, that came before you, and you had to deal with it after the fact, because people can claim that they didn't know. And I think we wanna live in a town where people can't claim they didn't know, and what they should know is, I think, what this group is gonna help, help define. Um, and, and that all seems like a part of, you know, this fabulous document you've all put together, but it seemed, it does seem like a, there's a, a, a little bit of a, not a blind spot, because no one, no one's, no one here is, 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 is blind to it, but could certainly use, use more attention.
Well, I think after the POCD is finished, then we also are talking about taking on the zoning regulations, and, you know, I don't know if it would be appropriate in there, Aaron, but I don't think we have very much.
I don't know what you're proposing. What, you know, what, what you're specifically proposing from a regulatory sense. So I can't, I, that's where I'm a little, I, I don't know how to word this. I, I don't know that I'm necessarily gonna agree with everything that you, you know.
We'd like to talk to you about it too, because.
So I think, not that I would.
Is it an ordinance, or is it a standard and all that?
That's why I don't.
Too detailed.
I don't know what you're proposing. So it sounds like i- it's wide and fairly broad, that you have an educational component and a management component, and, and, and it sounds like there's this piece of management of tree cutting on private property. And so some of that, I think, you know, versus a single-family house versus a commercial property, some of those, some of those things.
Is it a clock?
I think. I think that is, you know, up, I, I don't wanna, I, 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 I would prefer to leave the.
Aaron, I'm serious.
Regular, you know, the POCD broader, I have no idea right now. I'll look on my calendar.
We've invited the tree warden. For every meeting, he is too busy to come. You are allowed to come.
But I don't, you know, so I, I, I'm not opposed to think, but I, I, you know, I, I think it's premature to add language to support an ordinance that no one has seen, or a language that hasn't, but, so my thought on that was, leave things, and then.
Yeah.
Well, what the commission might want may not be, it, it may not make you happy, you know? Or what comes out of this, it may be a balance.
My thought is that this, we, we will, you will present something, and it'll get modified, and it will, we will end up with a tree ordinance. There's no question about it.
Right, but there's a.
It has to be a given tag.
The idea of the ordinance is you wanna enforce some goal or reach on. So I think if you stated the goal, and made that clear.
Take the goal first.
Yeah, and then, and then the ordinance is written, and then we can probably understand the goal.
But it doesn't seem like the POCD should actively avoid that goal, just 'cause you know there's a tree.
No, I don't think it is. I mean.
Yeah, we're just looking at.
Yeah.
Right.
And then you can refer to that when you go through the ordinance. I think that makes sense.
That's great.
And then the details and how you execute it is, either ordinance or recommendations or whatever.
You and I, I think, are aligned. My, my thinking is, we leave the POCD the way it is now. If we go to change it, it's gonna take a couple more weeks by the time we get together, as we would say, edit the whole thing. If we go with what we have now, with the idea that the, the work on the ordinance continues, and in 60-plus days, there'll be a public hearing wherein we can react to the public's comments, specific to management of trees on private land and public land.
It's great feedback for you to gain consensus on people's wording.
I agree with that.
Here's a new goal under Policy D, which includes the public land and what we would love to see for private land. That then gives us the material to work with and craft it to something we can put in the POCD.
So that would format your comment, or frame your comment.
No, I think continue working on your ordinance.
No, 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 that's why I wanna make sure we're communicating. I, I'm, I'm afraid of delaying the continuation of the POCD now.
Right.
We, it seems like.
But you can put in one word of preservation.
On the current board D, I think.
I thought we got.
I thought we were going to.
Yeah, I thought we were going to. Yeah, we can do that. That's one word on the, that's one word on the public side. But then it's still.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I think we can do that, right? One word.
And number four.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, number four.
Increase active management and preservation of trees along the public right-of-way and within town properties, including the development of forest management plans for town properties. And then anything beyond that, work through your process, provide during the public comment period for the commission to consider as, and, you know, edits, and then adoption, right?
Guys, let me say something here. I think we're repeating ourselves now, we're, and I think we reap the consensus, at least the commission has. And, uh, for, for you guys, let me suggest that, I think, as, as people have said, this, this gives you a great opportunity to see where you're gonna get pushed back, and exactly on what. My suspicion is, I'm talking with a couple of folks, by no means a random sample, people who are pro-tree, but who are concerned that if they have a tree that seems to be about to fall on their roof, they don't want the township telling them that they can't remove that tree.
Yeah, that would never happen. You're always allowed to cut a dangerous tree, that's never an issue.
For right now, so.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
Okay, good.
And I have one more question, after, after trees.
I thought you were happy at the last meeting.
Yeah, hey, leave now, and sometimes it's hard to accept yes. One, uh, question, I saw Policy D two, support remediation restoration at Title Wetlands, seems to have dropped out.
Thank you.
No, that's on here.
See, oh, it is? Okay.
Yep, and with an A and V under it, those did not leave.
Yeah, I, 'cause that was Coastal Resilience Commission wanted that.
That's, yep, D two, it's all there.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Bank statements and cartoons.
There it is.
Cartoons in the back. Banning members.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Good night. Thank you, Zoe, appreciate it.
Thank you, Zoe.
I'll send you an email.
Okay, yeah, and I, I tried to get as many notes on, uh, as possible, and there's a few times where it was hard to hear, but I think not all the major things, so.
Okay, appreciate your time, thanks.
Have a great night.
You too.
Um, pending applications, I don't know if we need to go over this very much, Aaron?
No, it's just placeholders, so you know what's, what's coming up.
Nothing new, thank you, everybody. Okay, a couple of minutes.
Sure. March 21st, 324th meeting, members present, Stone, Diesel, Donald, Roger, Bud, Pepper, Paul, Connor, Morgan, motion to approve. Michael, seconds. Any edits, comments, questions, I'm gonna see any, vote to approve.
Great, thanks. Madam Chair, um, the one thing I realized is that the commission did not set the public hearing date of Ju- formally set the public hearing date of July 11th, so I don't know if you wanna.
Oh, so going back to.
A motion to open back up, uh, the arrangement and go back to the POCD quickly to.
Or we can, yeah, just add it as an item even, as, you know, setting the date for the POCD hearing.
It is, it is part of one, but you, um, we just kind of moved on quicker than.
Yeah, we kind of announced it, didn't vote on it. Okay, so could I have a motion going back to our Plan of Conservation and Development update, setting the public hearing date, time, and location? Actually, should we do public location as well?
So actually, it's a, it's your regularly scheduled meeting, um, which is in this room. I can check for availability for a larger room, to see if the Hammond asset room, which fits slightly more, it, it's still hybrid, um, but I will try that for you if that's.
And we will be publicizing that meeting as well on the, you know, through the town website and through announcements, saying, "There's going to be a public hearing, this is your chance to speak out about the POCD."
Right, but if it's available, I'll book the Hammond asset room for that, as a special location, since it's a little bigger.
Okay. So, do we have a motion? Move, sorry. Second. Any further discussions? Favor, July 11th.
Favor, July 11th.
Great, thank you all. Further remarks, discussions?
No.
Can I ask you?
Thank you.
Question.
The, the Winter Club is what, they stopped, that there's, they stopped all construction at the Winter Club? Looks like it, doesn't it? We know, is there something we should know?
They weren't issued any orders to stop anything. I believe they're working with DOT regarding access, and I believe that you'll be receiving an application, uh, soon to amend their site plan and their master plan, changing their entrances. So they may have just held off on some things, or have been on holiday.
They were so active, and then all of a sudden.
Nothing.
I, I have no idea, I, I, I don't know that that's for any reason. It wasn't anything from our, you know, any of our regulatory.
They were so quickly moving.
Yeah, and I assume they're trying for a summer opening, but septic system is still above ground.
Yes.
It's a wet too, you know, the weather has been limited with the, the wet, so I don't know. Could be contractor delays, I have no idea.
Any other comments, questions, remarks? Motion to adjourn. Second, any discussion? Favor, adjourned at 9:00.
Thanks, Bob.
Goodnight, guys, ciao.